I'd like to call this April 28th, 2022 Regular Board of Education Meeting to order. Mr. Onagnostu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Cobain?
Here.
Mr. Mikko?
Here.
Ms. Stovcek?
Here.
Mrs. Hausum?
Here.
We are all present. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is our district goals. Our district goals remain the same: academic achievement and growth, financial prudence, and community engagement. And I normally have a little vignette or a showcase, but in light of all of the recognition that we have today, I'm going to save that for the next meeting, and we will move on to recognition. Dr. Reiba.
Thank you, Mr. Mikko. To start it off, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Cobain and Ms. Stovcek for some OSBA student achievement recognitions.
Hello, good evening. I'm going to first hand it over to Mr. Wengler to announce our Polaris Career Center Students of the Quarter.
All right, so one of the things we started doing is honoring our Students of the Quarter through Polaris, and I think this is important because, you know, as I said last month, our Polaris participation rate has grown in the last two years from 14% of our eligible students to 31%. The word is out that that's an amazing place. The word's out you can also go to college and be a high-achieving kid and still go to Polaris. So every quarter, what Polaris does is they honor a Student of the Quarter at Polaris, so that would be a junior or a senior in a program. For the third quarter, he is not here this evening, but I want to read his name anyway. For Retail Services, the Student of the Quarter is Kyle Epple, and Kyle will come pick this up. I talked to his mother. He'll come pick this up tomorrow at school. Now, Polaris also honors, we have satellite programs, we have biomedical sciences, we also have engineering. So they honor a Student of the Quarter at the school for high achievement. For Engineering, we have Blake Qualak. Did I get it?
Yeah.
They want to make you feel embarrassed longer. Yes. Our Student of the Quarter for Biomedical is Luka Stepanovic. Did Luka make it? Luka did not make it, so I did speak to his parents. He was going to try to make it. But again, this is a great honor, and these are students that are high-achieving, not just at Polaris, but here at Strongsville High School. So, great job.
Our next awards go to special teachers that have gone that extra mile. That is what the award says on it. Haley was instrumental in creating all this, and I've just been her partner in crime. So, I'd like to start by announcing Jessica Laux. She's a second-grade teacher, and she went the extra mile. So, Jessica, are you here? Debbie Kinsey, I hope I say that right. Ganzi, sorry. And she's music, and the kids just were going crazy because I think they were doing country music when we walked in on them. So, they seem to really be enjoying themselves. So, congratulations to Debbie. And the last is Alyssa Lempner, a kindergarten teacher, and her room is just beautiful and really neat for, like, kindergarten kids. So, congratulations to all these ladies. They do like a fabulous job, and they deserve our recognition. Thank you.
So, we asked the principals a little bit about these wonderful women, of why they were chosen for this, what they did, what they bring to the community. For Mrs. Lempner, she exemplifies the perfect kindergarten teacher. She is a warm and welcoming teacher that truly cares about her students and the progress they make. She's always trying to find ways to engage her parents in the classroom, whether it's through family pictures on the lockers, mystery readers reading a book to her class, or inviting in a parent who is a firefighter to talk about fire safety and show off his gear. Alyssa loves engaging families. She also has proven herself to be a leader in Kinsey Elementary Staff, as Alyssa has led staff meetings and helped perfect other teachers' craft as a technology coach. She is an excellent banker, baker, maybe banker too, but baker, and she also is very well-known in the staff lunchroom for bringing in a new cookie recipe she wanted to try out, which we invite you to bring those here, too, if you'd like to as well. We have Debbie Ganzi, who Whitney Elementary School was recently recognized by the Ohio School Boards Association with the Purple Star Award for meeting the unique needs of students and families in the military. We earned this award due to the hard work and dedication of our music teacher, Debbie Ganzi, who completed the application on behalf of the school. In the past, Debbie went so far as to attend boot camp at Paris Island with the Marines to gain a better understanding of what soldiers' life is like. Hopefully in November, everyone can come see what the Veterans Program is like at their school, and we're very happy with what she has done for our students. Lastly, we have Jessica. Jessica has gone out of her way to help students at the school, whether it's going outside to help students come in who may have anxiety, or if you're coming into the classroom, eating lunch with them, doing whatever she needs to do. She not only does that for students, like a particular student in her class, she does it for anybody. She does these little things, and she juggles the needs of the students with certain, jiggles the needs of students with specific learning disabilities, cognitive delays, and autism. You name it, she meets their needs. For this reason, she is being recommended for this award, because she truly does go the extra mile, and she has proven to be as flexible as a contortionist to meet the needs in the classroom, inside and out. So, thank you. We really appreciate, and the students, we really appreciate all of your hard work and everything that you are accomplishing, and we can't wait to see what you guys do in the future. And the teachers, thank you so much for being the true definition of Strongsville educators and our mission. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sharon and Haley, and once again, congratulations to all of our recognized students and staff, very much well-deserved. We're going to continue on with the theme of recognitions and recognize some of our outstanding winter athletes. So, I'd like to bring Athletic Director Denny Ziegler up to the podium to start the recognitions. And as you make your way, I do have to make mention of, like, 20-some minutes ago, I was at a swim meet with Coach Stacy, and he had shorts and a t-shirt on. So, I don't know how he quickly changed on the way up, but good work, man. Good work.
Alrighty, thank you guys very much for letting us take this opportunity to recognize our student athletes from our winter season. It seems like it's been a long time, you know, since the winter sports season ended, but when I look outside and I feel that it's snowing and it's still cold, I feel like there's not a spring sports season going on right now. So, it definitely feels like winter. At this time, I want to recognize our state qualifying swimmers. I'll have Coach Tom Stacy come up.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us. I've been at Strongsville for 15 years now, and we didn't do this for a little while. And then, it's been such a special thing for the community to kind of see and hear about what these kids are doing, because it's kind of under the radar a lot, too, and I don't know if they fully get recognized. So, it's nice that the board is recognizing them here. So, thank you very much for that. I'd also like to thank Denny for all that he does. Our school actually runs our conference swimming, which is a pretty big production to put on at Cleveland State, so it's not even, like, here. And Denny does a great job at helping us put that on and really lead the conference in swimming, which these boys are also conference champion now. They only had one loss this year, and it was to the team that got second at Division II State Meet, and it was a really close meet, too. It was really great. They actually got second to them at another meet. But again, it was a really great team, outstanding team that they had to go against. These boys, they, last year, we had relays at the state meet, and we graduated almost all, all but one of them. So, for them to come back this year, qualify for the state competition, and even in an individual and in a relay, to make finals was a huge deal. It says a lot about these boys, because when you lose the level of athletes and swimmers that they had on the team, and you step up the next year, and you come back, and you get there, that's a big deal. So, I'd like to recognize the boys. Boys, if you'd all just come stand up here, just on the black line. So first, we have Gibson Painter. Gibson was also All-Ohio recognition. Gibson is a junior. Nick Begani, Nick is a junior. Nick's All-Ohio recognition. He actually made state meet in two individual events and actually made finals as well, All-Ohio in those individual events as well, school record in both of his individual events. We have Gabe Griffiths. Gabe is a junior as well. Kyle Kanonico, Kyle is a senior this year, and Kyle was All-Ohio. And then Conlon Mayberry, Conlon is a junior, and he was also All-Ohio. So again, you actually, most of them, but Kyle are juniors, so they get to come back and do it again. But it's very impressive that, again, they know the guys that they lost from the team last year, but they didn't doubt that they could do this. And it was really special to get to see them do it. It was a very, very outstanding season. And again, they had one loss, which I think broke their hearts, but it was to a team that got second in the state, so that's still amazing. So, congratulations, boys, and thank you, board, for recognizing them.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
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 Is your hair normally blonde, or is that originally?
Congratulations.
Some traditions are wrong.
Congratulations.
Oh, no.
Thank you, Coach Stacy. At this time, I want to call up Coach Adam Kletzer to recognize our state qualifying wrestler.
Good evening. So, I'll cut right to the chase. We have been working incredibly hard in the last several years to bring Strongsville Wrestling back to where it should be and where it was for many, many years as well. And so, I've had the unbelievable opportunity to work with our current seniors since they were in seventh grade. So, I was able to coach them in seventh grade and eighth grade, and then all through high school, which is a rare opportunity, but something that I really appreciate. So, this season, as well as last season, Anthony Greckel qualified for the state wrestling meet this season at 150 pounds. So, Anthony, if you want to come up here? I'll just keep it brief, a couple of, as far as Anthony's kind of accolades go. Again, as I mentioned, last season, Anthony also qualified for the state wrestling meet. This season, we were able to go back to Columbus to wrestle. Anthony finished the season 38-10. His 10 losses came against highly-ranked opponents, including six of those losses placed at the state meet. So, pretty, you know, pretty impressive resume for this year. Anthony also had the opportunity to become part of the 100-win club, which is harder than it sounds, but we've only had two wrestlers in the last decade or so qualify for the 100-win club, so Anthony being one of them, and then also one of our other seniors this year was the second one in my tenure. So, Anthony plans on wrestling at the next level. Like I said, just an absolute pleasure to have known him and wrestled with him and coached him for six years, and to see him, you know, when I met him in seventh grade, I knew matter-of-factly what he could do, and he, you know, he definitely reached those goals. And like I said, he's going to be wrestling at the next level in college, and so I'm, you know, more than proud to see him do that as well. So, Anthony Greckel.
Thank you, Coach Kletzer. In our last state qualifying recognition, I want to call up gymnast coach Jen and to recognize Gianna.
Thank you once again for having us and for recognizing our student athletes. I have the honor of speaking about freshman Gianna Upchurch. Come on up. Like so many of our sports, Northeast Ohio is really the most competitive area of high school gymnastics in the country. Gianna is the conference champion on the floor exercise, all-conference team member, all-conference academic. She's all-sectional team member, all-district team member, and qualified on bars to the state meet, where she finished seventh in the state, and qualified for the All-Ohio state team as well. So, congratulations to Gianna, and as a freshman, I'm sure she's just beginning an outstanding career here at Strongsville. So, thank you. Congratulations.
I just want to take the opportunity to thank our student athletes once again for being examples, not just to your classmates, but younger mustangs and to everyone in the community. I want to thank the coaches for all the work and time that they put in, and especially the parents for getting them to the practices, for getting them to the competitions, for picking them up after the practices and after the competition. So, we greatly appreciate it. And I will, I was taking some notes. We have four juniors in the swim team, and we're going to congratulate our wrestler and watch him do great things in college. We have a freshman in the gymnastics, so I am excited that we'll get to see you guys next year, and one of you will get to see next year, and next year, and next year. But congratulations again. So, at this point in our agenda, it's public comment. I don't have any slips, but it would be a great time for anyone who still has homework to finish to escape. Some of you look too old to have homework to finish.
No one was here for the financial report.
So, next on our agenda is Approval of Minutes. We have the March 10th and March 24th Regular Board of Education Meetings. All district video and audio recordings are permanent part of the Minutes and available on our website. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Ms. Stavcek. Any discussion? George, please take the role.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Mikko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Next on our agenda is our Treasurer's Report. George, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mikko. I have a few items for your consideration tonight, the first being the financial report for the month ending March 31st, 2022. The full report can be found in Exhibit A. I do have the supplemental report to review the highlights. How we ended the month of March, which is nine months out of the fiscal year, or 75%. So far, year-to-date revenues are 1.7 million higher, favorable to the forecast. Expenditures are trending 45,000 over the forecast, which would leave a potential net impact of 1.7 million, favorable impact on the cash balance. The current monthly cash flow estimates, including actual data through March, indicate that the June 30th cash balance will be 60.8 million, which is 1.7 more than the five-year forecast of 59.1 million, which would result in a operating surplus of 7.7 million for the fiscal year. March revenues in comparison to last March, overall, March revenues are down 429,000 compared to last year, and the difference is in the state revenue collections, where, based on the foundation change, the gross revenues are less, but the net result is higher. So, overall, a single-month results can be skewed compared to a prior-year balance due to timing of revenue received. So, it's better to look at the year-to-date versus a monthly comparison, although monthly comparison is also a good benchmark. But looking at the March year-to-date, July through March revenues for this fiscal year are $548,000 less than last fiscal year, and that is due primarily to other revenues, where in the last year, we received quite a bit for the workers' comp refunds and dividend payments, which were one-time payments. Also, state revenues are slightly down, which is due to the change of funding formula, and tax collections are about $200,000 more than last year. So, overall, the net is $500,000 less. The variance to the five-year forecast, we estimated in the November five-year forecast that revenues will total 81.7 million. Right now, they're trending 83.4 million. The biggest variable is property taxes of 1.3 million, and the primary reason for that is the delinquencies were double than what we estimated and have been historical. Historically, we receive about $700,000 in delinquencies. This collection period, we received about $700,000 more, about 1.4 million in delinquencies.
George, can you just explain that a little more, a little more in-depth, because you hear the phrase "delinquencies," and you think of that as a negative, but it's actually people paying their delinquent property taxes.
Correct. And it's, our collection rate for property taxes is about 94%, 95%. There's residential property, commercial property. Residential is pretty consistent. We're closer for residential, about 98%. Commercial fluctuates year-to-year. So, what the delinquency payments are is property owners paying any past due property bills that might have been missed, either due not paying, or the timing of when they submitted the collection. If they submitted a week late, it's considered delinquent, and we don't get that payment until the next collection period. And as mentioned, we're 75% of the fiscal year. We'll continue to monitor revenues on a monthly basis. Expenditures, comparing March expenditures to last March, we're net $35,000 higher. Salaries and benefits are $187,000 higher. Our purchase services are $160,000 less, and that's been a trend all year, which is due to the, again, the change of the funding formula, where the out-of-district tuition was being deducted out of purchase services in our foundation. That is no longer being passed through the school district and just being paid directly by the state to those entities. Fiscal year-to-date expenditures, fiscal year-to-date expenditures are $875,000 higher compared to last year, and again, that's a result of salaries and benefits, cumulative $2.2 million higher than the previous fiscal year, offset by purchase services being $1.2 million less. And again, the purchase services is the outflows of the out-of-district tuition payments. And how it's trending to the forecast, the November forecast, we projected 75 million, $642,000 in annual expenses. Right now, it's trending about $45,000 higher. The one thing I do want to point out is when I forecast this out, I assume the remaining budget for most of the lines is going to be used, and then also forecast any trends that are going over. So, this might, once we get to June, the actuals might be different based on how much of budget has been used. But salary and benefits is our biggest component, and that's based on actual payroll versus purchase services. It's kind of forecasted out based on remaining budget as well as material supplies. So, we'll keep an eye on that. There's, we're closing April next week, and then that'll leave us two more months of the fiscal year. So, we'll monitor month-to-month and continue to report out. And then also, this time next month, we'll be presenting the five-year forecast, the May update. Any questions?
I'm very excited.
I know. As am I.
Any questions for George?
All right, so continuing on, we have five grant approvals, all from the Strongsville Education Foundation. The first one is the ASAP program. They applied for a Kitchen Edition Grant of $1,200. Also, the Life Schools Program at the high school applied for a grant for $152. The Chapman EL Department applied for a grant for $473 for resources and manipulives. Chapman first and second grade STEM cards for $653, and Classroom Storage and Organization Grant of $409 at Chapman. Moving on to Item C, we do have a appropriation amendment that is due to the grants that are being added, and also food services. Our food services revenues and expenditures are exceeding our budget, so it's a budget adjustment for that fund. And then also, there's a slight adjustment in our bond retirement fund to adjust for county auditor fees, and the cash is within the account to make them up. Moving on to Item D, House Bill 9 Ohio Public Records Training. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer that the Board of Education accept the certificated hours for House Bill 9 Ohio Public Records Training. This training is in compliance with all public records statutes and Board of Education requirement that Treasurer George Onagnostu be the designee on behalf of the Board of Education for public records training. This public records training was held virtually on Tuesday, March 8th, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:15 p.m., and presented by the Office of Dave Yost, Ohio Attorney General. And what this is, as elected officials, you're required to have this training once during your four-year term, or at the organizational meeting, you can designate the Treasurer, just myself, to do it on your behalf. So, I completed this on March 8th, and you're approving this to recognize that I did this on your behalf.
And this is just another example of our commitment to the public and to the taxpayer that we follow the rules as they're explained to us by Attorney General Yost.
And the last item is an invoice order approval. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer that in accordance with Ohio Vice Code, that after the fact invoices, the Board approves the following: that after the fact invoices, the board approves the following invoice repayment, and the treasurer be authorized to sign the fiscal certificate. The vendor is Tri-C Controls. The purchase order date was March 1st in the amount of $3,085. And the actual purchase date was the day before, February 28th, 2022. And this was to replace the power supply at Kinsner. Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I believe what happened is power panel went out at Kinsner, emergency repair to get it fixed overnight by the maintenance department. This needed to be done that night, or otherwise the school would have been shut down the following day.
So we thank our custodial staff for being able to do that in-house again. We thank Tri-S Controls for actually having the power supply on their shelf.
And that concludes my report.
Any questions for George? Superintendent's report. Dr. Reba.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Two items. The first one is an amendment to our agreement with Wright at School. Be resolved upon my recommendation that the amendment to the service agreement between Wright at School and Strongsville City Schools be approved to provide summer camp as stated in Exhibit Exhibit C. So just for everybody's information, Wright at School is, we contracted with them to provide before and after school at all five of our elementary schools. There was a request, a growing request from the parents that utilize that service of doing a summer camp, which would be four days a week in June and July. So Wright at School has put that together. Our original contract never dealt with summer camps, so that's all this is doing, is adding summer camps onto our contract. And then the next contract for Wright at School will be at a future board meeting. Any questions on that one?
This is our first year with them. I think it'd be nice at some point at the end of the year to get an update on how it went and how the service is provided.
All right. So what I want to talk about next is the board had some homework since our last meeting to look at our ESER budget. You have a paper-clipped copy in front of you, and that is going to be what I'll display on the screen as well. So it's a little bit of an abridged version. Just as a quick reminder, last time we met, I shared with you four different options. I recommended Option 4, which said, if it was already in the budget to be in place for this year, we would keep it. And Option 4 took out things that were eliminated, which were MTSS coordinators, RTI intervention specialists, summer learning staffing, special education coach. And then really, in the non-staff items, we took away all custodial equipment, window replacement, Kinsner HVAC, and technology subscriptions, and said we would just put those, all of those could go back into our department budgets. Kinsner HVAC was something that I would suggest at a later time, we would may look at our general fund to help support that project. So with that, that would say if we did that plan, we would have, that would cost us about $1.7 million. We would have about $2 million to spend. Last time we met, I shared with the board, and I'm going to where it says ESER Option A on that first sheet. I shared some options. I am recommending all of those options, and I was asked to rank order those, so I did. And I shared that I would rank order MTSS coordinators as the highest priority for our district. The RTI intervention specialist would be second, followed by the elementary math coach, special education coach, and secondary band and orchestra teacher. That would be one person that would provide support at the middle school and high school level between band and orchestra. Just as a note, when you take a look at the budget, the reason you see in the first column a zero next to the special education coach, that doesn't mean we're not going to have that position. It's just funded through a separate fund. So this year, for one year, we have ESER funds that are designated for special education. So the special education coach would come out of those funds. And then next year, it would come back to these ESER funds. If you look at the 23, 24 column, the reason you see a zero next to the grade 6 to 12 MTSS coordinator is I'm not recommending that position continue for that year. I'm recommending that we need one more year to solidify the work that was to be done. And then that position would be eliminated at that time. So if you take a look at that, we had $2 million to utilize. Over the next two years, that utilizes $1.4 million, which means we still have $600,000 to decide how we want to allocate. So before I move forward with the other option, I wanted to pause there and see if there was any feedback discussion from the board in terms of items in the original plan or Option A that you would like to dig into a little further.
The only clarification I have is to clarify, this is similar to the first time where we're setting, we're discussing a two-year budget, but we're setting a one-year.
Correct.
And then we'll do the same process for that last year. So although it seemed, although they all seem reasonable, they will be evaluated to determine which ones return and don't.
Yes. Very well said, Mr. Miko. So if there's no other questions on that, then we have to look at, you know, over that two-year period, even though we'll review it every year, we have $624,000 to allocate. So I gave, if you look at the bottom of your page, Option B. We, as a team, our whole team provided some additional options. Again, I rank ordered those, and you can see them, they're just ranked from top to bottom. The reason I'm ranking our permanent subs as a top priority for our district is we're an organization that's continually learning, and we need to provide professional development for our staff to continually learn and grow. This is not just about absences, daily absences. But we need to have extra substitutes to provide that professional development during the school year. And secondly, we do have a smaller sub pool. We don't have, there's not as many teachers out there, there's not as many teachers that want to substitute, or non-teachers that want to substitute. So we have a smaller pool, a greater need to provide professional development. Jenny's looked at that and felt that 10 teacher subs, six at the elementary level, four at the secondary level. The reason there's a difference there is because we have more flexibility level, or flexibility at the secondary level to provide what we call period coverage. So if a teacher is absent for a half a day, we can have other teachers that can come in, and you take Period 1, you take Period 3. Elementary, you don't have that flexibility. So that's why you need more. Ms. Bissell, in a prior conversation, made a, gave some good feedback about, do we want to consider making some of the elementary substitutes kind of a home base as a building to get to know the building and the students as an easier transition? So I thought that was a great idea that we can definitely look into and see, maybe we have a floater, and maybe we have some permanent subs at the building. It may not be perfect every day, right? But there can be kind of a home base that could be a concept there. In terms of three bus substitutes, Mr. Brechner and I spent a lot of time this fall looking at our busing absence rates and staffing. Now that we've got routes currently at a good rate, and don't forget, next year, when we move away from the cap limit and go back to our normal limits, there may be some additional efficiencies that we'll see through routes. But on average, we are seeing about three bus drivers absent a day. And we didn't, I don't know, Steve, now, do we have any sub-bus drivers? Are there any in the hopper or no? So we had three in the hopper, and then they got jobs with us, which is great. But we do need, if we have three drivers, permanent drivers, that would take care of, on average, how many bus drivers are absent and help us to not have to do double runs or decide what we're doing with athletic trips or field trips or things of that nature. Jenny, I'm going to turn it over to you for the monitors, because, you know, we didn't have specific conversations about the four-monitor number, but the rationale for why you think four would be a good start.
Yeah, I think in terms of just looking at the data of where we've been with monitors, it's a tough position to fill because it's a midday position. Usually, it's two and a half hours. We're lucky, some of our current employees who are bus drivers take those positions, so it works out nicely. But what we're talking about is covering lunch periods, recess periods, where kids, you know, have a little bit more unstructured time, need a little bit more supervision, especially at the elementary level. And so when we're missing one or two, it's difficult to make sure we have that appropriate supervision. So that's where the four comes in, and just based on the numbers and how many are out per day, we thought four would be a good number.
Jenny, is that largely elementary as well? So is there the potential to do a similar thing with the monitors having a home base?
Yeah, we could. And I think, you know, as, I'd have to look again, but what I'm thinking, the reason for four is that because of the bus drivers that are typically here to do it, maybe there was one or two buildings that we wouldn't need five.
So we see that as a top priority to continue to be efficient, provide professional development, continue the level of services that we want to provide, and the level of supervision for our playgrounds and cafeterias and monitor positions at the elementary level. Going below that through four on down, if it's something that the board is interested in, but I don't see, I see that's the line for me. That below that, if you take a look at summer learning, it was already planned to go to the general fund. Strategic planning, I've got that allocated in my budget for next year, should we move forward with an outside consultant for that. I'll skip down custodial equipment. Steve can factor that into his budget, and Andy can factor in the PBIS consultants to his budget. You take a look at, I am recommending reducing two RTI intervention specialists from the elementary level. We had five this year, or four this year. I'm looking at four this year at the elementary level, Andy? Yeah, we have four. I'm recommending reducing one at the elementary level, which will get us to three, which I recommended. We had one at the high school, which I'm recommending that we don't continue with. But in the Option B, sorry if I'm saying this confusing, but if we were going to add one back, I would add it to the elementary versus adding it to the high school. So that's why I kind of flip, flip that out. The reason I'm not recommending that is not that it's not a need or couldn't be a benefit, but I think we have services. And the reason it would qualify under ESER is because, or it would have to qualify under ESER is because our RTI intervention specialists work with students with disabilities and same-age peers. So one of the things Andy can decide is, and we haven't had conversations yet about it, we'll have it after we have decisions here. There is funds left in the special education ESER pot. So if he would like to utilize that for additional intervention specialists or other areas, he could do that, but it would only be able to service students with disabilities. So what I'm recommending is that we, the board, allocate and support Items 1 through 3, the three levels of permanent subs. As Mr. Miko said, if you look at what that's going to, what's that going to cost us over a two-year period, it exceeds our 620-some thousand. But we can do it next year. It'll cost us, you know, $370-ish thousand, and we can, you know, readjust going into the third year to determine what levels we want to have. That in consideration with everything else. So I'll turn it back over as a discussion of whether the board agrees with the permanent subs as being the focus, or if there's other items on that list you want to have further discussion about.
I think permanent sub, I think subs is going to be a challenge, not just for us, but for everyone. So I'm all in favor of, to some degree, this is moving coconuts. You know, whether the general fund pays for it, whether ESER funds pay for it or whatever, we're going to be as judicious as we can possibly be. So to be able to use ESER funds for those needs, in my mind, is good budgeting. But everybody in Cuyahoga County in Ohio and in the country is feeling the exacerbated labor issues. So targeting it so that we can get ahead of it, I think, is wise and money well spent. Anyone else?
Well, I appreciate everybody's time in reviewing this prior to the board meeting and your direction here tonight, and we will move forward and put this budget in place for next school year. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve Brechner, our business manager, for his report for the month. Steve, and board members, as he's getting his computer set up, you'll want to take out the other handout, which goes over custodial hours. We'll probably start on the front, which says, "Building pre-COVID, current, et cetera."
Good evening, everyone. So the two items I'm going to discuss are linked, but the first one I want to start about is the level of custodial staffing. And it's really going to be in three phases. It will be what was before COVID, what is currently, and then a recommendation of where we should go from there. So what was, in terms of pre-COVID, what was is we had 340 total custodial hours throughout the district, and six of those custodians were traveling, which per the contract, when we have staff members, custodians that travel, they're given 20 minutes of travel time. So that equated to 600 minutes of travel per week, or in other words, 10 hours of our week was paid to those custodians to travel in between buildings. Again, this is what was in place pre-COVID. This was in place when I took the job. Prior, directly prior to COVID, that year, was that 17 years ago at this point? I don't remember. That year, I was asked to do a custodial audit and see where we were at, where we can make improvements. Six custodian traveling was a lot. And as you look at that pre-COVID, even though our buildings are, can be grouped, especially our elementaries, into two groups. Smaller elementaries being Surar, Whitney, and Chapman. And where I get that is square footage, and I can show you that tab in a minute. And then our largers being Maraski and Kinsner. If we were to focus on those two groups, I struggled to find any uniformity of how we assigned custodial hours to those buildings. Pre-COVID, we had a two-hour custodian that would travel to Kinsner and a two-hour custodian over at Surar. It wasn't enough time. When you take into account travel time, you're under two hours to even be in the building. You know, to get situated, get your equipment set up, and actually clean, left you with somewhere around an hour and a half, and we'll be generous with that. But it didn't make any rhyme or reason in as far as uniformity. And I wanted to bring some uniformity to the custodial crew. So when we started this audit, the tab I'm going to show you is something that was created, OASBO, which is the Ohio Association of School Business Officials. They came up with a metric, and this is a very loose metric. Again, this isn't, this isn't what I, what I use in exclusivity, but this is a tool that I use to try and get us closer to some uniformity. What they said is, in their recommendation, a custodian should, in a building, clean up to 2,500 square feet. So what I did is I took the square footage of the buildings, and I divided them up by 2,500, simple math. And then I came up with the hours needed to clean. Again, this is just a recommendation. It was just a tool that I used. But you can see the larger elementary schools were pretty close in what was needed. The smaller elementary schools are, of course, because they're all smaller, they're exactly what we needed. So we had these schools that could be grouped, but yet you know uniformity. So what I proposed, and of course, was in the process of proposing, was to change this. Then COVID came. And because of the high demand needed for sanitation, for the students eating in the lunch, not eating in the lunchrooms anymore, the social distancing regulations, we ended up adding 37 custodial hours to the overall total. Again, that's reflected on this chart. So we went from 340 to 377. And that was completely because of what we were facing with the pandemic and the reaction to the world that we were living in in that time. We were able to go down to two custodians traveling, which greatly reduced that time that custodians were not doing the job that they were assigned to do, which was to clean the buildings. However, I understand that we are in a time period, for whatever foreseeable future we can estimate, that we're no longer under the restrictions that we had. We've been able to lift those. And I understand, while I would love to have all of these custodial hours, there has to be some give and take. So what I'm recommending are two options, and I will give my preference to which option I would like for you to consider more than the other. But again, with the idea of uniformity. So what we did is in all of the smaller elementary schools, again, that's Chapman, Whitney, and Surar, we moved the hours to be more uniform during COVID or the current time. So it was a daytime head custodian and two evening custodians. That allowed us to get to a level of cleanliness that I feel we needed. I did not feel we were cleaning these buildings pre-COVID to a level that was satisfactory. So that enabled that. So you had 24 hours at the smaller elementaries. You have 32 hours at the bigger elementaries. Because what we did is we prioritized some daytime hours because students were eating in classrooms. Now you couldn't have just one custodian go through and clean one large room a couple times a day. Now you had custodians. Now you had custodians having to go to every single classroom to get rid of that food and, and the food that was thrown away and clean up those classrooms, plus sanitizing at a level that we felt was safe for kids to return back to the buildings. So those eight hours were added in during the daytime. Just want to make sure I hit all my points. The, so those eight hours were implemented. However, that is not the, the necessary standard right now. We still want our buildings to be clean, obviously, but we don't need to prioritize all those extra hours going into the daytime. So that brings me to the first option that I'm proposing to you, and, and spoiler alert, this is the one I like the most. So, just as we go through it. So still keeping uniform, and again, prioritizing the elementary schools. What I'm proposing is that we keep the same level with one head custodian there during the day and two custodians in the evening at the smaller elementary schools. But what I'm further proposing is to have, eliminate eight hours of daytime cleaning at one of the larger elementary schools, split that into two four-hour sections. Those four-hour sections would be prioritized in cafeterias to finish any cleanup that would happen from groups, various groups coming in and out, and then also the office areas, and any other areas that the head custodian feels that they would have to clean. So you eliminate one of those daytime people and move the other eight hours to an evening shift. So that way, the larger elementary schools are now at 28 hours to clean, and the smaller ones stay at 24. Again, it's not necessarily the national standard, but it is closer to where we were, closer than what we were at the beginning, as you can see. Kinsner with option A would be still at 20 hours. It's still three hours less than the national standard, but again, the national standard can ebb and flow. It depends on how many offices are in that area, how many bathrooms are in that area. So using that not as our standard, but just as a guide, I feel like we're close enough that I can, I can look at, at the board and, you know, administration and say that we aren't cleaning to the level that we need to in elementary schools. With option A, I haven't mentioned really the middle school and the high school because those were unaffected, and also that's part of a restructuring program, which is my second point that, that I'll be getting to. Option B, which is, which is an option, again, trying to stay uniform. And what I would propose with option B is to eliminate the two daytime positions at Maraski and Kinsner, and then also eliminate two of the evening custodians at the smaller elementary schools, which would result in 12 hours. With, with the restructuring, you're, you're now at a deficit of 12 hours that, that you have at the elementary, 12 less hours. What that would do is also increase the amount of custodians traveling, but again, it's all done with uniformity in mind. I don't want to have one school that's of one size have six hours, and the other one that's only 1,000 square feet less have four hours. That's back to where we were, and I don't think that's the level of cleanliness that we need to be at. So those are the two options I would present to you, with extreme prejudice on one of them.
And then Steve, why don't you talk about the restructuring plan? Because that does, if you take a look at the options that Steve is recommending, you'll notice he talked about the elementaries because that's really where the hours change. The middle school and the high school pretty much are, are the same. Our administrative office is the same, but if you look at support services, that last line, that's how his restructuring plan impacts the custodial hours. Four hours at support services and one hour at the middle school, and Steve will kind of explain why in his department he feels some restructuring is needed.
So we have a retirement at transportation. Kathy Cola is retiring as of tomorrow, I believe, is her last day. And the, the business services secretary applied for that job and, and got that job. So as you pay me to do often, I, I looked at this as an opportunity to say, what are we doing currently? Can we do something more effectively than what we're doing right now, given the opportunity to restructure things? So, so that's what I've done. So currently, business office hours, business office secretary is at seven and a half hours, and she is in charge, she's in charge of all of those things, inter-office mail, bank deposits, warehouse management, key cards, board of elections, copier-toner, and then the district facilities. At the transportation office, we have an eight-hour secretary, a two-hour driver, office support. And then what we started adding in this year is a four-hour aide as office support. And then you see it says in quotes in there, "as needed." What we discovered through the year is, there's a lot of "as needed." So my, my proposal to you, as far as, you know, keeping those two positions in mind, is to have the business office split the secretarial duties between the business services and have him or her, whoever would apply, be in charge of key card management, board of elections, copier and a toner, purchasing and then managing district facilities. And then the rest of the day, that person would go over to help in the transportation office. That would also accomplish something that we are struggling to cover right now, and that is somebody always in the office. Because of the absence rate, because of the deposit of substitutes, sometimes the office is not available, because either Curtis or Kathy is driving, the business services, I'm sorry, the transportation secretary works her eight hours, and if she's not able to stay, she goes home, and sometimes that phone is left unintended at some vulnerable times, which is why that "as needed" person has been needed. So with this restructuring, we can flex the day so that there's somebody there early in the morning, and there's somebody there later on in the afternoon, and that office is never left uncovered with this restructuring, which I feel is an important point. So where, where the, as you can see on there, inter-office mail, bank deposits, and warehouse management is taken away from the business services secretary. What I'm proposing is that we add that to the custodian, custodial duties of the person that's cleaning the support services complex. And if, so, so support services is more than just one building. It's the mechanics building, the, the maintenance building, along with where the warehouse is, all of the bays and with transportation. So all of those buildings are cleaned by one individual for four hours each evening. What I'm proposing is to add those four hours there. That person would then be stationed at support services. They would take over the duties for the warehouse management. They would take over the duties for inter-office mail. They would take over the duties for the deposits, because that ebbs and flows. You know, deposits aren't as, as needed during the summer months, but yet, management of the warehouses, because that's when we get all of our influx of books. Inter-office mail, of course, goes down quite a bit, because there's nobody in the elementary schools. However, some deep cleaning can then happen in the transportation area, the mechanics area, and the maintenance area. So it's an ebb and flow, but I feel like there is more than enough work there, if you add the four hours in, that it is, is necessary. The, the other benefit to this is, we often get deliveries, and we have it now where Ruth Anne, who's currently the business services secretary, she'll get a call, or I'll get a call, that we have a, a delivery coming. Well, then she has to drop what she's doing and make sure she's there to sign for the delivery. Having this person stationed there will also alleviate that concern as well. What that leaves is basically some custodial hours hanging out there, because right now, the custodian for the support services, I'm talking to him. So the custodian for support services also goes to the high school. We do have a split between the middle school and the high school. A custodian goes in between there. With this restructuring, we're able to decrease the amount of travel for those custodians. Take the three hours that the, that the person was at the high school, that was splitting with support services, the three hours that the person was splitting with the, with the, the middle school, and make that one six-hour position, and there's no more traveling. The middle school goes from four hours to five. Number one, the middle school has never had any increase in hours whatsoever, and they, and an hour would help in some of the key areas that they have. And also, living in the, in pre-COVID, where we had a four-hour custodial position, it's very difficult to keep someone there. It was just constantly a revolving door, and not necessarily because they were getting other custodial positions in the district. They would work, they would find somewhere else, that it was a full-time, and they would, and they would go. With this, you know, an hour may not seem like much, but what we've seen is when we add an hour on and we're over that half-time, we do have people that stay in the position longer. Keeping them also at the middle school will allow them to get overtime on straight time pay, because they would be there during that time, and we can say to them, instead of, you know, paying out a couple hours of overtime to somebody at increased rate, we, we have in the past, and we would continue to say, there's some overtime available, would you like to stay? Which, of course, would be a cost savings to us, because the person's already in the building, and again, no travel. So it's, it's all linked together, but that would be my proposal to restructure, and then also my proposal for the custodial hours. And I, I hope, I, I try to make as exciting as I can, because I'm excited about it, but I hope, I hope that was, that explanation was satisfactory.
Questions for Steve? Steve, if, I'm looking at the, the four-hour aide office support as needed, and we want to shift it because we always need it. If we have enough bus drivers, do we need it?
I would say yes. You're saying with the subs?
Yeah, I'm saying, you know, in, if I'm misunderstanding how it's presented, that "as needed" office support is because we have the admin people actually doing driving, because we don't have subs. So if we suddenly have, for whatever magic reason, enough drivers, do we still need?
Because the admin would be in the office at that point?
Correct.
I would say yes, because we're also having, you, you have a new person that's going into that eight-hour position, and keep in mind, pre-COVID, we were at 16 hours in the transportation office. We eliminated eight at, at the request of previous leadership, and, and I will say in public forum, I feel like we cut too deep. We did cut our nose a little bit to, to do that. I, I feel like the hours are necessary there.
Regardless?
Regardless.
Okay. I mean, it resonates to me to have coverage. When people, when people want to know where their children are and the phone rings, we don't have a good excuse.
Right.
So that part resonates to me, with me, but I want to understand, if we, if we had the, the driving, the drivers, would Curtis and Kathy
Kathy, yeah.
Be able to stay in, in their desks and do that work?
They would be freed up to do the administrative work that they're paid to do. I can tell you Kathy Cola has been in that position for, for longer than I, I know right now. I mean, it's been a while, and she struggled when we cut eight hours from that position, to the point where that's where we added in two hours. And what we're finding is that, that has not been enough either. She, she can only do so much and answer the phones and, and all of that, so it is, it is needed, to answer your question.
Help me understand, we're going from, the disconnect for me is, is pre-COVID, we were 340 hours.
Yes.
What weren't we doing?
Well, in, in my opinion, we were not cleaning, especially the smaller elementaries, effectively. I can tell you that had COVID not happened, I would have come to you with a similar proposal. With, with the addition of makerspace, with the addition of increasing programs, with the addition of increased volume in our elementaries, that has all led to what we had was not sufficient. And, and I can, I can tell you, if you, if you did go to option B, and, and I have to own it that I'm, I'm offering up that option, I could also tell you that in a few years, I would be coming back to you and asking for more hours. I, I feel like it's, it's cutting too deep and getting us back to the pre-COVID hours, which were, I, I know, you know, it says business services on the front door. I always like to have the less hours to pay out, but we were, we were doing ourselves a disservice. And, and it would continue, considering all of the increases in programming and the increases in just building utilization that we have now, as we break up the buildings to, to fit those programs.
Are we able to quantify that, or is that anecdotal?
I think using the national standard helps quantify, but it's also, that only gets you so far. The anecdotal, the anecdotal part of that for me is, I, I want some uniformity in these buildings. They're a similar size, so to start going so granular as to say, this building should get 20 hours versus this one getting 21 or 22, I just think, we're, we're nitpicking that, that data to the point of a, a lot of confusion. And again, every time you, you don't make it uniform or make people whole, or at least half, now you're adding in travel time again. I do not want to go back to the days where we're paying for custodians to travel 10 hours a week. I, I think that, that's also a detriment.
I appreciate you bringing that up, because that resonates also. I mean, I don't think anybody necessarily wants to pay to travel, unless you're a bus driver, and it's okay to pay to travel. But as far as getting, getting the taxpayers' dollars worth, the thought of, of having them driving less and cleaning more, is a trite way to put it, resonates.
I think there's two things that I'd like to add, that, you know, and when Steve brought the recommendation to me and why I support option A is, is first of all, giving some context to what happens when we have a, a full-time evening custodian and a part-time custodian, and we have, now we have right at school at every single building. We have, you know, basketball, rec basketball, girl scouts, all of these things that are coming back into, into the buildings again, is what it means on a, on a practical basis is, instead of doing deep cleaning, instead of disinfecting everything, we, we start to become surface cleaners. Right? So when we have somebody that comes in for four hours, as Steve explained to me, we'll have somebody that, okay, I'll go through, I'll, I'll sweep the room real quick, get the big stuff, I'll get the trash, that person's going to come behind and get the other rooms that, that need to get, but we're not going to get to the level of cleanliness that we could with those two full-time people. I think the other thing that's a practical, a practical, practical challenge when you go down to these part-time, so if you take a look at option B, what that means is you're going to have one full-time person and a four-hour person. Somebody calls off sick, we're going to put that full-time person in that building. Two things happen. We don't fill the traveler, because we can't get somebody to travel. Or B, when you, when you reduce those hours and you can't get the traveler, then you have somebody that if the traveler's there or, or a sub is there, they have to lock up the building, and we don't have a solid full-time person that sometimes knows all of the lockup procedures, because they're, they're there between multiple buildings. So I believe, when you take a look at our, our elementary buildings, and even though we qualify them as small, they still have sizable areas to clean, having two full-time people to deal with, when so-and-so takes a vacation, we've got a full-time person there. When we have to fill that job and get subs, me subbing an eight-hour job and not having to manage two different buildings is, is more advantageous than having to manage two buildings. So those are some of the practical things that I think we have, would alleviate some of those, those challenges, you know? And, and the other, the other part of it is, option A leaves no staff member by themselves at, from seven to 11 at night. You know, so they've always got somebody with them, and if you talk to, I don't know, Steve, you would have better knowledge than I would, but if you talk to some of our evening custodians, you know, being there by yourself is not the greatest thing always. Not that we can't do it, we've done it for years, but, but this helps address some of those practical things that get beyond the data and the numbers.
Is it well within the budget?
I have it costed us out.
Costed out?
George, I guess before, just to answer that question, we currently have 377 hours of custodial staffing. How is that factored into your budget? Is it just factored in for this year, or did that, was that carried forward?
No, that's factored in.
So the 377 is already factored in?
Correct.
So this, although insignificant, it would be a small reduction, correct?
Yeah, so, so is it a, so that was my question. Is it a 374 here, then five hours on the other page, or is it?
No, 374 is inclusive of those five hours.
Then, yeah, that is. I would say if we're reducing hours, then it's supported as the 377 already included.
Putting your thumb on it?
What's that?
You're putting your thumb on it, 100% accuracy?
I already got the 377 in the budget.
Don't ask him if he'll give a plaque up.
What do you need next steps?
What I need next steps is direction from the board. What I would share is, if, whenever we What I need next steps is direction from the board. What I would share is if, whenever we reduce hours, we have reduction in forced procedures. So there's a timeline for those and that timeline, as Jenny shared with me earlier, is 75 days. So when we take a look at doing that, so, so the part that I would say that I need tonight is the restructuring plan. If we're good with the restructuring plan, we need to post, we need to move forward, we need to start doing that stuff. So that's the priority right now. Can I get consensus on the restructuring plan? If you want to take another two weeks to think about the custodial plan, that's fine. All that that would mean is that timeline for 75 days for, we maybe have with one RIF position Jenny, or would it have be anything?
Yeah, I, I think it's just one and I think we've met the 75-day timeline. It's the 60-day one I'm a little concerned about. We have to notify the person. So that's coming quicker.
So these are, these are rolling timelines. Whenever we start it, it, it may start over. So just if you go with whenever we give the final decision on this, the 75-day window means these hours will remain in place until 75 days from now and then the reduction can take place.
The restructuring makes sense irregardless of the hours. So I'm comfortable to, unless somebody else wants to say no.
I don't want to say no, but I do have a question. Steve, is the three and a half hours that you're leaving for those four duties, is that sufficient or are we going to be in a position where we're looking to add that back in?
No, I believe that's sufficient. You're talking about for business services?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe that's sufficient. Again, there's, there's ebb and flow that happens there. District facilities, while sounding a little daunting, it, it ebbs and flows throughout the year. So I, I believe that that's entirely possible. Right now, she's doing all of those things plus the courier and, and those are defined hours during the day. So that's, that's how I factor that in.
Okay, thank you.
So for clarity, we have consensus that the restructuring can move forward and then in terms of?
At the next board meeting, it's yea or nay on Plan A or B.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
The second item is transportation for non-public students, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that school bus transportation for the listed students be declared impractical. The time and distance required to provide transportation, the cost of providing transportation in terms of equipment, maintenance, personnel and administration, and the additional service unavoidably disrupts current transportation schedules. Be it further repond upon the recommenda-, sorry, be it further resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education in lieu of providing transportation pays parents of students attending these schools. This reimbursement will be based on the amount allotted by the state and that's in Exhibit D. Also, we have some gifts. Marcia Karchmer donated a flute with an estimated value of $200 to the band program at Surar Elementary School. And William Sisa donated miscellaneous office supplies with an estimated value of $200 to Surar Elementary School.
Any other questions for Steve?
Before Steve escapes.
Yes, sir.
We would, after all of the discussion about maintenance and our custodial staff, et cetera, it behooves us to get an update on what happened at the high school.
So Tuesday morning, about 1:30, we had a hydrant line leak. It's a water main, it's a six-inch line. And it flooded the majority of the classrooms designated for some special, special education, special intervention. It also went into the media center and saturated the carpet there. A claim has been issued and I have claim numbers we're working through. The, the cleanup was, was done and again, hats off to our custodian and our maintenance. They were, they were on site. Some of them even came in, you know, well before their, their hours to clean up so we could have school on, on Wednesday. But we're just dealing with the damage that, that water brings, saturating some drywall, saturating the carpet. We're inventorying the equipment. Some computers were underwater or parts of them were underwater. So we're, we're managing all that right now and we're trying to get everything cleaned up, inventoried, claimed as soon as possible and then, you know, get everything fixed and in functioning order again as soon as possible. We are going to have to break up the floor in one of the rooms though. It's, it's heaved up. So we need to get down, fix that pipe and then we're probably going to have to repour a concrete floor in one of the, the classrooms. The good news is it was hydrant water and not the other water.
I wasn't going to ask that question. I'm sure it was on a couple of people's minds, but I do want to, you know, publicly compliment the team, right? That, the kind of accident we had could have closed the, the high school for the entire week, right? And we had, we have people that have the skillset, but they also have the drive and the commitment to do, to go the extra mile, to use a phrase we heard earlier today. And it's, it's heartening to hear, you know, it's heartening to, to get a text saying, hey, we had a problem. School will be closed today and then later in that day, school will be back in business tomorrow. Now, we had to shift and, and do a lot of work, but when you hear employees showing up at 2:00 in the morning and staying till 11:00 at night the next day to make sure our students can get back in school and get back to doing what they need to do, that's a great story. Talks about the dedication of our staff, of our, of our coworkers and how important education is for us in Strongsville. So I want to publicly thank everybody who was involved, but please make sure to pass on the board's compliments and thanks. And, and then when, when we're playing with cement and putting in new floors, the board will, at least one member will really want to inspect closely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Maybe I'll put a hand, may, no, 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 that would never happen. That would never happen. But to see the tools might, might be interesting to some board members.
That's right. Aaron, please save us.
All right. Good evening. I have six items for your consideration tonight under curriculum. First one is an updated student teacher affiliation agreement with John Carroll University as found in Exhibit E and we do update those yearly. Item two are summer school dates for this upcoming summer. We have our elementary summer school dates from June 6th through the 23rd. And those are Monday through Thursdays and then secondary summer school will run a week longer, June 6th through 30th and again, Monday through Thursday. Item three is a revision to the high school program of studies that I brought to you a few weeks ago. We want to do a revision to the agenda from February 24th. And the course we're looking to do the revision for is the broadcast journalism and media communication and print journalism and media communication courses. And those were on 30, page 31 of the program of studies. Item four is a student teacher placement. We have a student assigned to the high school from Baldwin Wallace University and that will take place January through April of 2023. And then items five and six, we have two overnight trips for the high school varsity football team camps. Item five, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the permission be granted to Strongsville High School Varsity Football Team to attend West Virginia Passing Camp, which is June 16th and 17th, 2022, at West Virginia University. Transportation will be via, via chartered motor coach and expenses will be paid by participating students and fundraising. And then similarly, item number six, same high school varsity football team to attend Pitt Passing Camp. And this one's June 25th through 26th and this one's at the University of Pittsburgh. Again, similarly, transportation via chartered motor coach, expenses by the athletes and the fundraising activities.
Can you comment a little bit about the changes to the classes?
Sure. So we had the broadcast journalism and the media communications and then the print journalism. We had those courses and we decided to streamline them and kind of bring together our efforts with our yearbook and our, the lantern and add those into the courses. So not are they completely separate, the yearbook was a completely separate entity. That's now going to be embedded into the course with some of the skillsets. We are also going to bring some social media presence utilizing Dan Faust and his expertise and help with our high school social media in, in learning those skillsets and then also have, giving us a bigger presence on platforms that are done by the kids. So we will have everything produced by the kids, less of an adult focus, more of it in class, even though you, there'll still be some after-school activities and a lot of work that goes into all of this. But what I'm super excited for is to have a yearbook, it's not a yearbook class, but the yearbook will be worked on in school like a lot of other districts have and not just a supplementary ancillary activity that happens by an adult leading it after-school hours.
Yeah, I'm excited about it. I think both the yearbook and the newspaper, I mean, those are activities that I remember you did and it was all to get credit for it and also to make it a, a learning experience. I think it'll be great for our students.
Thanks.
Thank you. Aaron, next up we have Andy Trujillo, our Director of Student Services with his report for the month. Andy?
Good evening, members of the board. I have one item for your consideration this evening. That is tuition-free admission for exchange students. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the tuition-free admission for the 2223 school year be granted to the following exchange students. Any questions for me? Thanks.
Thank you, Andy. Next is our Assistant Superintendent Jenny Pelco with the Human Resource Report. Jenny?
Thank you. Under Human Resources this evening, I have the following items for your consideration. Under E1, we have the resignation of a non-certificated staff member. Under E2, retirements for certificated staff members and we'll celebrate those at our, our next meeting, our next big meeting. Under E3, appointments for certificated staff members and appointments for non-certificated staff. Appointments for certificated substitutes, appointments for non-certificated substitutes. We have the appointment for a non-certificated, our summer school clerk. Non-certificated athletic supplemental contracts, certificated supplemental contracts paid upon completion. We have non-certificated supplemental contracts continued there paid upon completion. Appointments for home instruction tutors. Under E4, change in status for non-certificated staff members. Under E5, continuing contracts for non-certificated staff. Under E6, stipend for our summer curriculum development. And we have two stipends there. Some are for our pupil services personnel that do work during the summer and participate in professional development activities. And the second one, we use our Title II fund for that and that is mainly for our teachers to continue curricular work throughout the summer. Continuing with stipends, we have our summer learning administrators that are working hard to get, take registrations and get that all planned for the summer. Under E7, medical leaves for certificated staff, medical leaves for non-certificated staff. Under E8, unpaid leaves for certificated staff. Under E9, volunteers. And finally, under E10, we have one correction to the March 24th agenda under Human Resources, number three, a change in status. Avril Iscernia, who is working, was working as an aide or monitor at the high school, has stepped in to help with a leave of absence here at our, our administrative offices as a data input. So she's helping with registration, doing a phenomenal job, getting that taken care of. And so her salary needed to, to be corrected to a blended rate. And that concludes my report.
Jenny, for the, for the supplemental contracts for the, for the school musical?
Yes.
Was that for Adam's family value or do we have another musical in the wings?
No, that was for that. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Jenny. Next up, we have Director of Instructional Technology, Dave Binkley with his report for the month. Dave?
So I have six items tonight. So the first one is the AT&amp;T Lit Fiber Network Contract. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves the five-year contract with AT&amp;T for lit fiber connectivity for all data and voice transmissions between the board offices, the support services complex and all the buildings at the rate of $3,600 per month. The contract rate will be, will cover the period from July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2027. This is subject to an E-rate discount. Item number two is with Southeast Security for the SmartNet VoIP 2022.
Dave?
Dave.
Oh. George is trying to get your attention.
Sorry. Hey, why don't you share the news, what you shared earlier to me with the public about the AT&amp;T contract? How much are we saving per year?
Yeah, we're, we're saving, it's cut down a little over by half. We did the, the numbers today in our budget meeting. It's about 55% we're cutting down in cost. Our first five-year contract with them included costs for installation of hardware. Now that we have those in place, we can continue on the contract with them and it, it's dropped down in price. Also, the price of fiber itself has cut down as well. So it's a nice little surprise when we got that quote this year for E-rate.
It's about $52,000 a year, right?
Is that what the savings is? Somewhere around there? So it's, it's a big difference.
You were just ballparking, George.
What's that?
Just ballparking.
We just went over it this morning.
But, so yeah, that's going to be nice because it was, in my mind, from what I was told, it was, it was a big hassle to change. So luckily through the E-rate process and the way the bidding worked out, we don't have to incur any of those additional issues or obstacles of changing services again. So number two is with Southeast Security, the SmartNet VoIP 2022 Cisco Phone System Support and Maintenance. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the agreement between Southeast Security and the Strongsville City Schools for the SmartNet's support be approved to provide phone system support, advanced part replacement, software support, maintenance and minor and major updates. The contract will cover the period from June 22nd, 2022 through June 21st, 2023 at an annual cost of $43,680. Item three is with Southeast Security. It's about network upgrades. This is part of our E-rate program as well. It'd be resolved upon the recommendations of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves the agreement between Southeast Security and the Strongsville City Schools to replace and configure all the access points at Kinzner and Maraskey Elementary School, switches and battery backups at the five elementary schools, provide training and perform wireless surveying at a total cost of $157,061.16. So this is subject to a E-rate discount. Our next one is with Power School for student registration. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves a 12-month contract for the purchase of Power School enrollment registration software at an annual cost of $18,360. And we also have item five here for Power School, the Assessment Item Bank for Performance Matters. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves a 12-month contract for the purchase of the Power School Assessment Item Bank and Power School Performance Matters software at a cost of $19,140. And my last one tonight is technology upgrades to a Makerspace computer lab at Strongsville High School. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves the purchase of 32 PC workstations and monitors with necessary cables at the cost of $46,807 and $807.28 to establish a Makerspace lab at Strongsville High School. The cost will be shared equally between Strongsville High School and the technology department.
Any questions for Dave?
I do have one question, Dave.
Yeah.
I'm looking at this and all of them are coming out of the general fund with the exception of the reate, E-rate reimbursement funds. Can you speak to exactly what that means?
So the E-rate funds, when we do certain items that are for instructional buildings, instructional support, like the fiber going to the buildings or the access points, it's a piece of equipment that allows us to provide internet to the students' devices so they can participate in educational learning. There is a formula that, that state actually, it's a federal formula that provides money back to our district based on some metrics. So since some of these are for instructional purposes, some of them are software and programs, that's kind of like why we do the difference between the different funds.
We're sitting on a reimbursement that we then have to reuse?
Correct. Yes. So we, we pay for it, pay for it fully and then it's submitted and then we get a reimbursement from what we sent based on what the formula tells us.
Thank you.
So from every, from those reimbursements, Michelle, we have a separate fund set up. It's an '014 fund. No, no, '019 fund. '09, yeah, '019, 9926, where when those dollars come in, the E-rate reimbursements go into this '019 fund and it accumulates. And right now, there's about $200,000 in that '019 fund, which these funds will come out of. of.
Thank you.
And what we've done through the previous years is from the purchases that were, the purchases that we do the year prior, we use those funds to help fund the next project. So it's not a complete, you know, process because we don't get a full reimbursement, but it does provide a good chunk towards the next project for us.
So where you see, for example, the AT&amp;T fiber where it says subject to E-rate discount, so at the end of the, so we pay for it this fiscal year, then at the end of this, at the end of the fiscal year, there's a window where we can apply for the E-rate discount for that. So money then comes back based on the application, and it goes into the '019 fund. And same thing for the AT&amp;T, any equipment that's eratable, and then also our internet services through Nwakas, we get an E-rate discount as well, and those funds go in that '019, which funds future projects. And it's more used for one-time infrastructure projects.
And I was ready to call a special meeting to go over all of these things, but Cameron just said I can just talk to Dave and Jim directly. So I did, I did have a phone conversation with Dave, and we did go over them. And I wanted to highlight, for example, the lit fiber. We had five bidders, and, you know, we chose the best value, and it also happened to be the lowest cost. But it was a substantial, it was a substantial lower cost. I think you said Spectrum was twice, was the next bidder, and they were twice the cost. So it, it highlights how much the hardware, the initial cost of the hardware, is baked into those contracts. So we'll be able to save that money and repurpose it elsewhere. The other one I was going to comment on was the, the Power School assessment, which I think as we continue to learn how to use it and get that into the hands of our teachers, that'll have a lot of impact on how we teach, how we are able to quickly take a look at how our students are learning, and then our teachers can modify and adjust and change. So I think that has a lot of potential, and I'll be excited to follow it going forward. Any other questions now that I've opened the floodgates for Dave?
If I add one more thing, the Southeast Security Network upgrades does finish our first set of true continuous improvement infrastructure that we started three years ago. We started with the high school, then we did half of the elementaries, and we're finishing the other half this summer. So since I've been here, we've done everything but the middle school infrastructure for Wi-Fi access for our students has been completely overhauled.
Thank you, Dave. And with that, that concludes my report.
Any final questions for Cameron? Next on our agenda is report on Polaris Career Center. Mrs. Bissell?
Thank you. I have some exciting news to share about our previous Polaris Board Meeting. This took place Tuesday, April 12th. And prior to that meeting, we had a buffet and recognition program to honor some students that were outstanding at both the satellite programs and the onsite programs for Polaris for 2022. So Dr. Raab and I represented Strongsville City Schools at that banquet, and I'd like to acknowledge the students that were there that night to receive their awards, so you as the community can hear their names and about their excellent work. So in terms of our satellite programs, so those are the ones that are housed within our school district. Noah Reagan is our engineering student at Strongsville High School. He received an award. And then in terms of the ones that are held at Polaris Career Center, Leanne Hawk, Strongsville High School in the Aeronautics Program, and I know she was here recently and received an award. So she is doing some excellent work at Polaris. Leali Oditala in the Medical Professions, and I did mention her recently again, too, because she's part of the nursing program. So again, we have some students who are really standouts at Polaris Career Center. And then Victor Krowolski in the Welding Technology. And then finally, a shout out to Connor White in the Construction Trades. Not only did he receive the Outstanding Student 2022 Award, he was one of only three students honored in kind of a separate category. So he was, he received the Outstanding Employee Polaris recipient. So he was acknowledged by the place of business that has hired him to be kind of an intern and Polaris, Polaris together. So that company, I don't remember the name offhand, but they were there to honor him as well. So congratulations to Connor on being an outstanding student and an outstanding employee. And he is ready to move on, you know, in his education and in his career. Our meeting followed and was short and really did, this was the focus of that meeting. So in terms of meetings, that's it. Our timing is a little unfortunate because tonight was the ninth grade advantage event at Polaris. But just to keep in mind, for those of you who have middle school students, you know, down the road, they do have this opportunity for you to come in the building. It was 6:00 to 7:30 PM tonight and see the building and ask your questions. So that will be every spring. And then finally, I'm personally excited about this one. From June 13th through 16th, Polaris Career Center is once again hosting Camp Discovery. They haven't done this in a, in a handful of years, so I'm really excited it's back and now that my children are of the age that they can participate. So June 13th through 16th, 9:00 AM to 11:30 AM, cost is $60 for the whole week. So it's reasonably priced, and the options are pretty amazing. So just to give you an idea, they're in various categories. STEAM, I have, one of my sons is going to do the crime scene investigators. So they're going to look at hair, microscopy, maybe, DNA extraction, decomposition, et cetera. So there's biomedical, there's robotics, there's young broadcasters, as that relates to our new high school curriculum. There's culinary programs, making backyard outdoor games, which would be really fun for the summer. So if you have a upcoming, so current fifth, sixth, or seventh grader, and are interested in this, please check out the website and get registered before they fill up, because I expect that they will. And again, if you have any questions, I'm happy to help as well. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I know in the past, I don't know if sold out is the right word, but those, the summer camp programs ended up turning away people.
Did you have to be like fifth, sixth, seventh grade like this year?
Currently, so, yeah.
No, Sharon, you can't go.
I know. I wanted the DNA thing that I.
Yeah, rising sixth, seventh, and eighth graders.
Okay. Thanks.
Next on our agenda is report on legislation. The report today is Tuesday, May 3rd is Election Day. It's a primary election. Polls are open from 6:30 AM to 7:30 PM. Many of our schools will be polling locations, so be, please be courteous because school will be in session. But we will make sure that, that the election can go on well and our education, our teaching can go on well. But please exercise your right to vote. Board Liaison Reports, City Council. I was at the last City Council meeting, and there was, again, I want to compliment Mr. Clark for always being in attendance at our meetings and giving excellent reports about us at their meetings. But on the agenda, there was discussion of the Town Square Project, and that is a volunteer project. So that is gathering steam, and there will be opportunities for anyone in the community to volunteer and be part of that. And we're going to work together collaboratively on some opportunities for the schools and the students to be part of that program. Roadwork, everybody knows that the chuck holes are particularly bad this year because of the winter, and the city will be responding soon and throughout the entire summer, and it will be a substantial amount of funds. But the funds are there, and we will, and the city will get the roads in better condition. And I forget, Tom, you can correct me, one of the Silver Sneakers programs is Full Sneaker Ahead, but it is going to be at the Rec Center, and it's the other, there are two.
By United Healthcare.
It's the one by United Healthcare. So there are two major health insurance programs. The one that they finally got in is the other one, so almost everyone in the city should be able to avail themselves of that, which is a good thing. That completes my City Council report. Do we have a report for Strongsville Education Foundation?
Yes. The Strongsville Education Foundation has their annual fundraiser coming up on May 7th, Jockeys and Julips. It's at 5:30 PM at the Earnfield Recreation Center. You can join the Education Foundation at its annual Kentucky Derby viewing party, followed by a night at the races. Tickets are $100 each, or a table of 10 is $900. The proceeds go to benefit our Strongsville City Schools and our students by the five grants that we talked about earlier in our agenda, and scholarships for our graduating seniors. And that concludes my report.
Strongsville PTA Council, Sharon?
The PTAs, as you all know, the year is coming to an end, and they end with their installation luncheon, which is May 13th at Jay Bellas. That starts at 11:30. They'll be sending out invites to everyone, and they have also picked their tea in PTA Helping Hand recipients, and they will be announced at this special luncheon, as well as all of next year's board. And they have planned rocking at SMS on May 27th on the Strongsville, on the middle school's football field. So let's all hope that it's like a really nice day out. And I just want to say thank you because I've sat in and there things, and I've watched what they've done, and they all work really, really hard, and they plan some great things for the kids. So these, these moms, these dads, whoever is doing it is really putting in a lot of time. So I want to send out a shout to thank them all. That's it.
Board Committee Reports, Finance Committee?
Next meeting to be determined, to be announced.
We did have a meeting, though, April 6th.
Oh, that's right. We did have a meeting. We haven't had a meeting since pre-COVID.
Right. We had a meeting on April 6th, brought the committee back together.
A member of us.
It was well attended, too. We went over the district finances, the update on the five-year forecast, and then the primary discussions were looking at our cash balance and kind of options, so how to address some needs of the district and how to reserve some funds based on, based on some of the excess cash that we may have accumulated throughout the years. And next meeting, we'll get a meeting, I'll note it shortly, but looking early June as a follow-up to the first meeting.
Early June, and I think we've discussed that it'd be nice to get some new people in there, so if you're interested.
Yep.
Follow up, send an email to George to find out what it's all about.
Yep.
Policy Committee?
Our next meeting is coming up here soon, May 9th, 6:30 PM here, if you're looking for a grand old time discussing some policy.
And with an invitation like that.
We'll be there.
Facilities Committee, our next meeting is May 17th, 6:30 PM in the, in this building. Business Advisory Council, do we have an update?
Yeah. We had a meeting on the morning of April 1st. We learned more about the experiential learning opportunities that are provided for the students in our schools. So some of the things we talked about is you could go to a manufacturer, for example, to see how that works. Another one that really showed me just how intricate it is, is partnering with Southwest General. Not only can they meet with technicians or shadow technicians, see what they do, but also security, dieticians, IT, so covers a whole different area of stuff as opposed to just healthcare workers. One of the questions they had is what if someone wants to be an author or a writer? Do we just have them work or shadow an author? People were then talking about how they had connections to publishers and different companies like that. So it was a really good experience to discuss different ways that all of us could get together within the community to help these kids have these experiential learning experiences. It helps with work ethic, especially after COVID. The kids that were there speaking said that they spent all day laying in bed sometimes during COVID with school, and this forces them or makes them want to get up and actually do something and something worthwhile that they're proud of themselves for doing. This program helps to pinpoint what to do after high school instead of just guessing or thinking, you know, I want to do this, but I have no idea how to accomplish that, and then letting go of that dream and not accomplishing it because it just seems too hard. They might Google the answer, and they don't see it right away or not understand it because it's a little bit more difficult than that. And this actually helps them see the steps that they can use and also helps build their resumes. The kids take personality tests, and they said, the three that spoke with us, said that it was interesting to see that what they maybe thought they wanted to do their, you know, up till now, is not what they're meant to do or not where they're best to be at. One girl said that she wanted to do something with a manufacturer, and then she said, I really know nothing about that. I just always thought I wanted to do this, but it turns out I'm a people person, and I should work with people. And the more I think about it, I want to work with preschoolers. So it helps them to take these personality tests, it helps them to get up and talk. The kids that we spoke to, you would have thought it was like talking to adults. They were very confident, they were very well put together, they were very poised, and they felt very comfortable speaking with us. And we all made the comment of just seeing these high school students speak and have the confidence of it was wonderful to see. Right now, there are 13 students in the program. Next year, they are planning to be 20. And the potential areas of interest, I took a picture of it because there was a lot of them, potential areas of interest are forensics, air traffic control, construction, IT field, sports management, fitness, personal trainer, business, finance, sales, medical field, fashion, law enforcement, and the desired skills and traits that hopefully they learn from all this. Teamwork, communication, patience, asking for assistance, staying focused, attention to details, critical thinking, goal setting, determination, and time management. Anyone that's interested in, has a business or knows someone that does have a business and would be interested in giving these kids an opportunity to work with their business, we highly, 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 highly suggest that you reach out to one of us, and we would love to partner with you because I think that this is the future of, I mean, these children are tomorrow, they are the future, and what opportunities we give them today will shape the world of tomorrow. So thank you.
Well said.
Thanks.
Consent Calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the consent calendar at this point of the agenda means that all items appearing in the agenda with asterisks are adopted by a single motion unless requested otherwise. Do I have any otherwise? We didn't have any changes from the floor. Do I have a motion?
Sub moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Ms. Stavcek. Any discussion? Please take the roll.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Dr. Raab, Superintendent's timely information. You have 60 seconds.
Okay, I can do it. So just congratulations to our outstanding music department. Again, over spring break, our instructors and some volunteers and our students were in Florida and New York. So heard wonderful things about the trip, and congratulations to our choir students who had an opportunity to go to New York, and our marching band and our orchestra that were down in Florida and performed to rave reviews to the folks down there. So always proud of them in terms of what they do in Strongsville, but, but also their ability to travel and share their talents with others. As we come in the final month of the school year here, at the high school, there's a teen idol competition that will be on Saturday of April 30th at 7:00 PM. Tickets are available at the door for $10, $5 for students and senior citizens. Always a great time at that event, as well as rhythmology, which will be from our high school drum line. That will be on Friday, May 13th, 7:00 PM at the high school auditorium. It's hard to believe, but we've already had, what, sophomore awards the other night? We've had to reschedule freshman awards here in a little bit because of the closure of the high school. But awards season is upon us, so check out your school's newsletters, whether at the elementary, middle school, or high school. And we're excited to go back to some of our old traditions of how we are going to end the school year. And I think everybody knows, especially our students, and I know our staff know this year, that Friday, May 27th, is the final day of school. So we're about a month away from wrapping up another school year. Maybe that was like 70 seconds?
60 seconds. Who's counting?
Yeah, right.
Board of Education, other? Does anyone have any Board of Education others?
I just wanted to mention, and I don't know if you were playing on it or not, that the Arts in Strongsville is having their Spring Fling fundraiser Saturday, May 14th, from 5:00 till 8:00 PM at Harvest Saloon on Pearl Road. They'll have food and drinks, sideboards, 50/50 raffle, raffle baskets. The ticket prices are $30 per ticket.
And I was just going to share, Cameron talked about the academic awards. It is at the high school. Each grade does the academic awards. Mr. Wengler spoke yesterday about them and mentioned that every year, more and more students are qualified for the academic awards. So if you're, if you're a parent and your student qualifies, it's important to celebrate our academic achievement. We celebrate our athletic, our arts, et cetera. It's also important to celebrate our academic achievement. It's fun to see the students, some of them feel like they're forced to be there, and some of them are forced to be there. But it is. some of them are forced to be there, but it is, it is important that we celebrate the, all of the achievements, whether it's, whether it's the students in the AP classes, or the medals, the woods. We have a comprehensive high school. We teach across the board, and it's good to see all the accomplishments of all our students, so please make sure to take advantage of that. And then piggybacking again on Cameron, we did have the, the Disney trip and the New York, the New York City trip, and they sound, they are fun, but they're also experiential learning. And our band gets to perform in a, in a venue that's Disney, and that's fun and exciting. I know the show choir went to New York City, they did some workshops with some professional choirs, they were able to see the nine-eleven memorial, which I, I know is educational and very moving for all the students and the adults there. It was interesting to realize that the students there, this class was not born when nine-eleven occurred, so that gave me pause. And then, you know, just sharing a personal anecdote, my son got me a Rolex watch. He won't tell me whether the salesman showed him the Rolex watch from a coat or not, but it has a sticker on it, so it must, and it says Rolex, so it has to be real. So that is my others. We do have meeting notification and date change. We have a regular Board of Education meeting work session on Wednesday, May eleventh, at seven PM in this room, and then we have our next normal board meeting on May twenty-sixth, seven PM in this room. I'm sorry? Oh, it is at the high school. That's the retirement one. That's one of our favorites. So we will be there, we will have a good board meeting, but we always look forward to recognizing our retirees and, and the impact they've had throughout the years on our, on our students and in our school district. Executive Session for the reasons of?
To consider the employment, dismissal, discipline, or demotion of a public employee, and to review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Ms. Stavcek. Any discussion? Please take the roll.
Mrs. Hausel?
Yes.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, the motion carries. We will enter into executive session at nine PM. We have no expectation of further business. Thank you for your attention, and have a good evening.